Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board. We will now start our meeting with a roll call to account for all our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array. Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
It's kind of hard to see if you just have prison.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Now, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. In the February 8th email, you received draft minutes from the February 1st meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections? If not, may entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First on the agenda is an introduction to the updated Department of Public Works and Transportation Standard specifications and the standard details for construction manuals. Mrs. Lisa. Lisa, your last name is?
I'm Paulson.
Thank you. And the staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here with us this evening to present the manual updates to the Board. Please welcome Ms. Epizola.
Justin Hall will actually be presenting tonight for me.
I'm sorry, who will?
Justin Hall.
Good evening, everyone. So let me go ahead and I'm going to share my screen. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me share. Let me know. Are you able to see my PowerPoint slide?
Yes, we are.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Hafford and the Planning Board members. Want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to introduce, for your consideration, the Department of Public Works and Transportation Standard Specifications and standard details for construction. Per County Code, Article 32, Title IV, Sub-Title IV, Adoption of Manuels, EPWT has prepared the Manual of Standard Details and the Manual of Standard Specifications. These standards cover everything from how we solicit bids, how bids are to be provided by interested parties, through the contract award process, how construction work is performed, and how contractors are paid for the work performed. The current specifications were approved and issued in the year 2000 with addendums from 2007 and 2013. The standard details were approved and issued in the year 2007. We have updated the standards to modernize the documents and integrate current industry standards to update the approved materials and construction practices to correct titles for positions and agencies, including changing the name of Public Works to include transportation and to reflect new county policies and procedures. So here you can see some of the next steps in this process. But, uh, you know, we are presenting these standards and, uh, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. Thank you, everyone.
Board members, are there any questions for Mr. Hall? If not, may entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a virtual public hearing as specified under Section 32-4-404 of the Baltimore County Code for Thursday, March 7th, 2024 at 5:00 PM for the Board to receive comments on the Department of Public Works and Transportation Standard Specifications and Standard Details for Construction Manuels.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed? Not hearing any? Hearing any? Thank you. As a reminder, the public hearing will be virtual on the 7th.
Thank you.
This evening, we have an opportunity to discuss and then vote on the 2024 Basic Service Maps. This issue was first introduced to the Board on January 18th, 2024. The public hearing was conducted on February 1st, 2024. Staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here to answer any questions from the Board that may have discussed and before we vote. Would the staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation like to add anything this evening?
No, there's nothing else we have to add. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any outstanding questions at this time?
Only question I have is I was told there was an issue in Catonsville that that had been resolved. Is that in fact the sewer line, has that been resolved?
Mr. Hall?
Sorry, I was just getting unmuted. Are you?
Are you referring to Overbrook Road?
Yes.
So we're still working through that. We're doing some surveys. We've done a, uh, taken a first step with diverting some flow and we're monitoring now. So we're still working on that, but we're actively working with the property owner and the engineer and a contractor.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions? If there are no other further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Before I make a motion, I did want to see the written responses that we got to the various questions. That was, that was very useful.
Uh, hold one second, Scott. Board members, if you don't have a question, please turn off your mic so that'll stop the background.
Real, real quick. Bev, it looks like you're in the meeting twice and that's our feedback issue. Can you see if you have two WebEx windows open?
Me?
No, Bev.
Oh, Bev, sorry.
You're muted. We can't hear you.
Trying to figure out Wyman. Can you hear me now?
Twice, Bev. You got two, you got two things on.
Yep.
I can kick one of them out for you.
Perfect.
Thanks, Taylor. All right, Mr. Halepka, now continue with your question.
Yeah, it was just a comment that I appreciated getting the written, um, responses to the various questions that we had raised previously and that some of the public had raised. That was useful to be able to, to have that to refer to.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no other further questions or comments, can I have a motion?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends the adoption by the County Council of the 2024 Basic Services Maps for public water, public sewage, and transportation per the memoranda as submitted by the Director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation at the January 18th, 2024 Planning Board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka. And now that I have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Now, I'm going to do a roll call. Please say yea or nay. Mr. Array.
Yea.
Ms. Brophy. Ms. German. Ms. German. Ms. German. Okay. Mr. Hafer's not here. Mr. Heckman?
Nay.
Mr. Heinel?
Yea.
Mr. Hinton?
Yea.
Mr. Halepka?
Yea.
Mr. Johnson?
Yea.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yea.
Mr. Pirlo's not here. Ms. Panero?
Yea.
Mr. Warren?
Yea.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Do I get the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wolf, Ms. Wolfson.
Nay.
Thank you.
And do you want to circle back to Ms. German?
Ms. German, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, but apparently you can't hear me.
No, we can hear you now.
Oh, good. Okay, yea.
Thank you, Ms. German. Appreciate that. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on the major actions of the February 8th, 2024 Landmark Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At their February 8th, 2024 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Mitchell Property located at 1608 South Rolling Road in Relay. The Charles Woodland House, Lighthouse Property Investment MD LLC Property located at 77 Winters Lane in Catonsville. The Smith Property located at 502 Upland Road in Pikesville. And the McMillan Property located at 5167 Biaduct Avenue in Relay. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. That is the conclusion of our agenda. We will adjourn the meeting and then immediately reconvene for our CIP Subcommittee Meeting. This meeting will be the same here on WebEx. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Board meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We will now reconvene for the CIP Subcommittee Meeting to hear the staff's recommendations. I will turn things over to Mr. Halepka, the CIP Subcommittee Chair. Mr. Halepka?
Thank you. My name is Scott Halepka. As Ms. Hafford said, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I'd like to start by acknowledging the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Hafer? Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo? Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear staff recommendations from the Department of Planning. After their presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions and then the Subcommittee will vote. I want to note, even if there are members of the community in attendance tonight, this meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 19th, 2023, which was the opportunity for the Board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement budget. I would now like to invite, um, staff from the Department of Planning to begin their presentations.
Good evening. Capital Improvement Program Committee Chairman and members of the Board. Tonight, planning staff will review the capital budget for fiscal year '25 and capital program for fiscal year '26 through '30. Staff has reviewed the budgets as prepared by the agencies, the Budget Office, and the County Executive. We have found that the funding amounts have not increased or decreased, nor have funding sources changed from the fiscal year '24 adopted budget, except to increase funding for Department 201 Sewer Systems in fiscal year 2029 and to increase funding for Department 209 Community Colleges. Staff would now like to review those projects in greater detail with you as well as summarize agency responses to the citizen input meeting requests. Let me pull up my screen and then Austin and Chris will begin. Um, okay. So are you seeing this, the capital budget? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Austin, did you want to begin yours?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, good evening, members of the, uh, of the Planning Board. First one is 201 Sewer System. The Department of Public Works and Transportation is requesting $31 million in fiscal year 2029 in order to address aging infrastructure identified via the Asset Management Program that prioritizes pipes for repair based on, on their aging condition. The pipes will typically be rehabbed by insertion of liners or replaced in kind. The funding sources is revenue raised from metropolitan Pago bond sales. The bond sales were previously authorized, but a clerical error resulted in the $31 million figure not being represented for fiscal year 2029 in the fiscal year 2024 adopted capital budget. Uh, DPWT will correct the clerical mistake, uh, and show the, that $31, $31 million for fiscal year 2029 in this capital budget request. Uh, there were, there were no citizen, um, uh, input meeting comments and it, our recommendation is that the, that the Planning Board accept the budget as proposed for Department 201 for the sewer system.
All right. This is Chris Weaver. I reviewed community colleges. Hey, Jen, could you please go to the best slide? Thank you. Um, community colleges have made some, uh, adjusted funding amounts for 2025 through 2030 compared to last year's budget. I basically talked to the, uh, Budget Director at CCBC and got sort of a summary of everything they did. They did go over this a bit in their presentation, um, though it's a bit confusing. Um, but I think he gave a pretty good summary. So I'll sort of go through here. You can see the highlighted changes, um, for the five projects, or five, yeah, projects shown, um, the changes compared to last year. For Project 2, Stormwater Management, there were increases in 2026 and 2028. So following the Governor's Proposed Budget, the state match for the stormwater management has been moved from 2025 to 2026. Most of the funding will go towards CCBC Catonsville's Stormwater Management Facilities and Outfall Restoration Project. Um, the rest will go to some other smaller projects. Project 7, Roof Repair and Replacement, was increased slightly for 2028. Uh, increased funding requested will allow for program modifications if necessary as well as to address inflationary and supply chain costs and other unknown issues which may be uncovered as the work begins. Project 103, Catonsville Renovations and Additions, uh, increases for 2027. CCBC decided to delay two projects on the Essex campus and begin a new renovation addition for the CCBC Catonsville Automotive Tech Program. This project includes construction of a new facility for the Electric Vehicle Program and renovation of the existing facility to meet the expanding instructional needs for gas engines. State funding match for this project is the cause of the increase for 2027. Project 104, Essex Renovations Additions, decreases for 2026 and '27, increases for '28 and '29. Uh, as noted above, CCBC will begin work on the Catonsville Automotive Technology Renovation and Addition and then delay both the construction of the Theater and Arts Facility and Remadica College Center renovation and addition on the Essex campus, which is caused, which will be pushed back to '28 and '29 and is the cause for the increase in '28 and '29. Project 106, Power Plant Modernization, will slightly increase in 2027. This is part of the process of working through updated estimates during the program submission and approval process for the CCBC Essex Primary Electric Switch Gear and Distribution Replacement. Uh, furthermore, CCBC's budget request, as shown in their CIP presentation and template, includes increased funding not shown in the stage, stage one budget. CCBC requests county funds be increased to $21 million for the '26, '27 biennium, $26 million for the '28, '29 biennium, and $30 million for 2030 and beyond. These increases in county funds and associated increased state match are factored into their request for this year. There were no citizen input meeting comments and staff recommends the Planning Board accept the budget as proposed for Department 209 Community Colleges. For Storm Drains, um, Storm Drains have requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts um, for 2025 through 2030 as requested in last year's budget. Um, there were four, uh, issues mentioned in the citizen input meeting. Those were the Chapel Ridge Flooding. There was an area where there was a poorly drained area at a parking lot and there were, it was icing over in the winter. Um, it was becoming hazardous for the citizens there. Uh, DPW has responded by requesting 2026 funding for the construction of a drainage manifold system to convey those some pump discharges underground. Or the Maple Road Flooding in Edgemere, Baltimore County. DPW is aware of those conditions and are awaiting a design and construction proposal to study the site with recommendations for piping as well as fragmites removal. Uh, DPW has requested the funding for 2026 to improve those drainage conditions. For the Oella Flooding Situation, um, they, DPW is aware of the recurrent flooding in Oella. Um, it's been, had a significant, significant impact on the infrastructure and safety of residents there. FY 2026 funding has been allocated toward assessing the situation and working toward a solution. Similar situation for the Jones Falls Watershed Flooding. DPW recognizes there's an issue there and they are requesting 2026 funding or allocating 2026 funding for assessing the situation and implementing a solution. For all flooding situations, um, DPWT is using, using the new, uh, Storm Drain Asset Management System, which will help evaluate the condition of the drainage networks in the affected watersheds, identify the drivers of flooding and quantify their severity. Uh, green stormwater infrastructure will be evaluated as the first or priority option to reduce those flooding impacts. Our staff recommendation is the Planning Board accept the budget as proposed for Storm Drains.
Good afternoon, Planning Board. For Department 205 Streets and Highways, the first items were Reisterstown Road and Pikesville Improvements. DPWT responded that they will continue to work with their partners within the State Highway Administration to address issues along Reisterstown Road, which is Maryland Department of Transportation to own and maintain. Um, and it seems to be a great opportunity for local transit users as well as expanding access to the assumed to be revitalized Pikesville Armory. For Complete Streets, 2013, uh, DPWT responded that as part of the 2023 Bike and Ped Plan, Complete Streets projects were identified and a pilot project is underway at Old Court Road from Liberty Road to Reisterstown Road. Uh, and bike and trail facilities have also been identified in the plan. For Sulfur Springs West, Shellburn Road, DPWT responded that stop signs and rubble strips were placed at Shellburn and Sulfur Spring intersections to aid in the safety and awareness of the intersection. Transportation will take a look at Linden Avenue and Westland Boulevard. For Main Streets, uh, DPWT responded that they will need further information as to which main streets need to be evaluated in terms of pedestrian safety, lighting, and walkability and that the Bureau of Highways handles streetscape maintenance, which they can be contacted. For the UMBC Bike and Ped Plan, uh, the 2023 Bike and Ped Plan provides locations that will be targeted for improvement there. For the Gwen Oak Improvements, uh, as, as part of the 2023 Bike and Ped Plan, pedestrian facilities have been identified for all of Baltimore County. For Villanova Pikesville Streetlights Request, um, these streetlight requests are being evaluated by DPWT. For Elmwood-Belmar Community Traffic Calming, DPWT has said that Springwood, Markland, Raspe, Old Home, Elmwood, and Dale, uh, St. Patrick and Point Pleasant will be evaluated to determine if any other traffic safety measures can be implemented there. Staff recommends that the Planning Board accept the budget as proposed for Department 205 Streets and Highways. For Department 207 and the, uh, Arbutus Pedestrian Bridge Request, uh, DPWT responded that Wiley's Ave to Ashbourne Road is being monitored through DPWT's routine safety inspections and will be prioritized and addressed on an on-call contract if repairs are required. The current condition of the bridge is rated fair and Stevens Ave's from East Drive to Town Hall does not have an existing bridge and DPWT has no current plans to construct a bridge there and an evaluation of connectivity for the area would be required to determine if a bridge is warranted. Uh, staff recommends that the Planning Board accept the budget for Department 207 Bridges Culverts and Gray Separations as proposed.
Hi. Good evening, Planning Board members. Um, General Government Buildings, uh, has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year for fiscal year 2025 through 2030 as requested in last year's budgets. There were several comments from citizens, uh, most of them regarding senior centers. So the Hereford Senior Center, there's a request for continued funding. Uh, and, uh, similarly for the Jacksonville Senior Center, a request for continued funding. Um, currently, both are, uh, planned for new building designs to be completed by June 2025. Um, the Bycota Senior Center, there was a request for better 88 accommodations for the first floor bathroom, um, as well as a request for new permanent awning at the front of the building to provide shelter for seniors sitting outside, waiting for rides, and the walking ramp. Uh, and there was a request for a commercial kitchen and additional parking. Uh, the Bycota Senior Center is also currently in the renovation design phase and that should be completed by May 2024, uh, so this year. And then the, um, there was a request for the Lansdowne Baltimore Highlands Library and Senior Center. The, there's a request for funding for a new combined library and senior center for residents. The current library and senior center are aging, not accessible, and not large enough to handle the daily visitors and program. The response states that the site and design study for Lansdowne Library uh, is underway in the fiscal year '24 through '25 and the civil site survey is getting underway. That will inform a feasibility study for a shared facility on the current property. There was also a request for funding for the Towson Library for improvements to There was also a request for funding for the Towson Library for improvements to. Or replacing the current Towson Library, including adding a public elevator to bypass the ramp, making the bathrooms ADA compliant and offering free parking. The response is that a study was done in fiscal year two thousand and twenty four for the replacement costs and in the interim, a minor. Interior renovation is planned, design and cost estimations for some interior improvements in lieu of a complete building replacement is underway. These improvements will incorporate the bathroom concern. New elevator and free parking are not in the current scope of improvements, but will be considered as future capital needs. And as of now, staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for general government buildings. I can also talk about the fire and police right now, give me just one second. Fire Department Buildings has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year. Similarly, the Police Department also has requested the same sources of funding and funding amounts per year as last year's budget. The comments from citizens request. Funding in light of the county's decision to add at least two new council districts. They want the, the county to look at how this will affect police and fire department facilities as services are already stretched thin. The concern was with the Healthorp Station, Healthorp Station, along with support from the Arbutus Volunteer Fire Department is the primary service provider for the entire area. South of Wilkins Avenue, the Volunteer Violet Bill Company has been disbanded, Lansdowne remains in an outdated and poorly located setting. While English Council lacks sufficient space to house its equipment. Precinct ones, Wilkins Station is cited on property that UMBC would like to acquire and if the facility is ultimately moved further north. As has been proposed, the areas to the southwest will receive less of a police presence, response times suffer in emergency situations. The response from the fire department is that the addition of new council districts will not have an impact on fire and EMS operations or response times. Consistent with current protocol, the closest and most appropriate fire or EMS response unit will continue to be dispatched to render aid regardless of the number and realignment of. Council manic districts and the police department. Commented that as far as police facilities and boundaries are concerned, the council manic boundaries have no bearing on police services being provided to the community. The police department's precinct boundaries, hours of operations and post car boundaries are independent of the council district boundaries. All ten of the police precinct boundaries cross over more than one council manic district and are designed to provide adequate coverage to the community. Regardless of council district geographic boundaries. In any addition of council manic districts will have no impact on police services provided to the community. And then the new precinct one Wilkins Precinct will be built on the existing Wilkins Police Precinct Site. Patrol operations will continue to function from the site during the construction pages, phases and the facility will not be relocated. Therefore, responses times will not be affected and so. Staff also recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for Police Department Buildings and Fire Department Buildings.
For Department two twelve Parks Preservation and Greenways, the citizen input meeting concerns included the Sweet Air Park in Jacksonville. Replacement of the lower grass athletic fields with a multi-use athletic turf field equipped with programmable LED lighting. Rec and Parks' response was that there is no funding presently budgeted for this work. And a review of past local commitments made as of the time of park development would be required. As there may have been a commitment to not illuminate the fields. For the Gwynne's Falls Hiker Biker Trail, there was a request in funding for the trail as outlined in the Baltimore County Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. The response from Rec and Parks is that the Department of Rec and Parks fully supports the proposed trail. And is willing to evaluate potential park renovations and enhancements, which will be prioritized based on available funding. For open space in Pikesville. The request, they were requesting funding for a purchase of a one point five acre area for open space located near Meadow Creek Park at three hundred Church Lane. The response is that Rec and Parks has considered this property previously. But did not elect to pursue it since there are many other potential acquisitions being pursued in other areas of need. It should be noted that numerous, numerous pedestrian and bicycle access recommendations were voiced, including some that would specifically connect with parks. And rec sites. Rec and Pike's Park strongly supports pursuing any viable bicycle and pedestrian projects as funding allows and regularly partners with the Department of Public Works. And transportation for those projects. Staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for Parks Preservations and Greenways. For Department two ten Land Preservation, there was one citizen input concern requesting an increase of funding for land preservation programs. From six point five million to eight million, as well as an increase in funding for rural legacy and out years from one hundred thou, one hundred thousand to its current level of. Two million, five hundred and forty one thousand. The response is that this year's bond request will be higher than previous, the request will be for six million and the previous request was for five million. Staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for land preservation. So that ends our presentation, if you would like to begin your discussion.
Thank you, and thank you to the various. Planning Department members for their presentations. We have fifteen separate items to consider. If we could vote on them, if you know, everyone is happy with the staff recommendations, we could go ahead and, and vote and to support all fifteen. If there are specific items that people would like to pull out. We could pull those out and then vote on the remaining and then, and then discuss those that people have comments or questions about. What's the sort of sense of the board on how you'd like to proceed? Go ahead. Yep, Mr. McGinnis.
I would like to make a proposal on a, on the schools budget, so I'd like to have that done separately.
Okay. Are there other items people would like to pull out?
The one I had a question, or actually have two, but the one we had put in when we did the. These. Charging stations, that there be extra money put in there to fund the fire department's, you know. Need for additional equipment to fight fires with electric vehicles. I didn't see that or hear that in there. And the other one that I would be opposed to is the six million dollars for land preservation.
Okay, so we'll pull those two out. Other people have items that they would like to have more discussion on? Mr. Heckman, did you raise your hand?
I'm, I also need to, I have a conflict on the schools budget, so I need to pull that out separately, so I can recuse myself from that vote.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wolfson?
And I'd like to pull the Bicota Senior Center issue.
So that was general government buildings, I believe?
Two ten.
Yep. Anyone else have items that they would like to? Discuss separately? Then I would like to start with a motion to approve. The items that people do not have questions about, Ms. Halford, I've got my list, so if you want, I will just go ahead and read it.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka.
Okay. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program. Agrees with staff recommendations to accept the proposed budget. For the stage one proposed FY twenty five and FY twenty six, FY thirty programs. For the following departments. Two oh one, two oh three. Two oh four. Two oh five. Two oh seven. Two oh eight. Two oh nine. Two twelve. Two eighteen. Two twenty one and two thirty. Do I have a second?
Second.
I will now do a roll call vote, again, this is just on the items that we are not going to be pulling aside. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yay.
Ms. German?
Yay.
Ms. Halford?
Yay.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yay.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
These motions pass. We will now have discussions on the, the specific departments people wanted to pull out. We will start with Department two ten General Government Building, Ms. Wolfson, you've had something you wanted to add?
Yes, given the condition of the building and that the seniors are standing out in the rain and. Weather and the fact that the bathrooms are not ADA compliant. I think funding should be accelerated beyond the design stage for those improvements. They sound almost like emergency improvements. This, can somebody tell me how long between the design phase, which it's scheduled renovation design made two thousand and twenty four? If it was accelerated, how, how, what, how long would that take to bring them up to? Acceptable standards, at least for the bathrooms? Or how much would it cost?
Ms. Wolfson, if I may. The cost, I don't think we can quite determine without going back to Rec and Parks. I mean, assuming to property management. And as far as accelerating. Are you suggesting that? Money be moved from twenty six into twenty five?
That would be good.
I don't know, Marina, in your review, did you have any information that could help Ms. Wolfson with this?
No, not specifically. But I can reach out to the Department of Aging and Property Management and see if they have further comment.
Ms. Wolfson, or Mr. Chairman, what may be appropriate is this could be in the transmittal letter. That we request because unless we know how many dollars get moved. It may be difficult, but if, as for instance. Although your Diamond Ridge Park didn't happen as quickly as you expected, Ms. Wolfson. It's, it's happening though, right? We could put it in the transmittal letter and request that the funding for overall improvements be accelerated.
I would second that.
Without knowing specific dollars to move around, it's a little more challenging.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that how you'd like to proceed?
Yes. That there, let's relate that there is urgency, this is not just inconvenient, it's not safe.
So I'm going to make the, the following motion. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program. Agrees with the staff recommendations to accept the proposed budget. For the stage one proposed FY twenty five budget. And FY twenty six, FY thirty program for Department two ten General Government Buildings. If extra funds are available, the CIP Committee would like to request funding be provided for the Bicota Senior Center. And or that FY twenty six, twenty five funds be moved up to FY twenty four.
Respectfully, I would like to say that. This is not just recommend like we recommend the roof, this is, this is, there's some urgency here and that we respectfully request that. Funds be. You know. Applied. To, you know, bring this facility up to standards. You know, just saying it's recommend is not strong enough.
So perhaps, Mr. Luke, maybe it's not if extra funds are available, but that. Funds be accelerated and. Like what that then requires is pushing something else back that has been in the queue in front of it. So, but that's what you're suggesting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we, we are urging the county to expedite the repairs to the Bicota Center.
That's great, thank you, Scott.
Okay.
If you're looking for a second, I second that.
Okay. Does anyone have anyone, anything else they want to discuss about the Department two ten budget? If not, I will do a roll call, again, this is to support the motion with the additional request for the Bicota Center. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yay.
Ms. German?
Yay.
Ms. Halford?
Yay.
Mr. Heckman?
Yay.
Mr. Heinel?
Yay.
Mr. Hinton?
Yay.
Mr. Johnson?
Yay.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yay.
Ms. Panero?
Yay.
Mr. Warren?
Yay.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yay, thank you.
Motion passes, thank you, so that's Department two ten. Next up, we have Department two thirteen Schools. Mr. Warren, I mean, yeah, Mr. Warren, now, Mr. McGinnis, you wanted to talk about the schools?
Hereford High School has one of the largest. High percentage of after-school participation in the county and the state. And there is this lack of space to accommodate all of these students. In the last forty years, nothing has been done to add to the space available. I, it is, parents and students have to travel many miles to find anything available. For practice or participation, there's over twenty eight different groups that use the facilities and they're all competing for space. I would recommend, I, I would move that one million dollars be added to the budget. To for the planning and design of additional indoor space for Hereford High School.
And do you have a proposal where that would come from?
Well, I think if you're, have a budget, it's not a hundred percent of everything, there's always a, there's always some. Extra space in that budget for additional items, or it could be something else could be delayed for a year, there was two.
So, so Mr. McGinnis, are you suggesting that a million dollars be removed, for instance, from FY twenty six and be put in FY twenty five?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone have any other thoughts about, about this?
I mean, Scott, would we word it the same way that we did for Ms. Wolfson, that if there happened to be extra funds in other buckets, that we could kind of slowly move it towards this bucket for Mr. McGinnis, could we do something similar?
Yeah, I think the one difference is. This sort of lacks the urgency that the Bicota issue had in terms of. And I suspect it would cost a lot more than a million dollars to plan and, and develop such a project, so.
Right, because it's not a life safety issue.
We have, we have put this in past CIP transmittal letters. And I don't have the exact language in front of me, but the language has typically been that it. I don't have the exact language in front of me, but the language is, has typically been that if there's additional funds available that um it be uh set aside to look at increasing the recreational space at Hereford High School.
I think last year, didn't we say something about, I don't know the exact wording either, maybe um planning staff could help. I want to say, did we say it was like quarter of a million dollars for more of a feasibility study? If that rings a bell to anybody, I, I think it was more of a feasibility study than a full design package.
I can read it to you. It says um gym space at Hereford High School. The board recommends adding one million to depart- Department two thirteen schools for planning to review expansion of the indoor facilities at Harford High School by adding additional gym space. The current space does not adequately accommodate the needs of the high school's physical education program and the recreational needs of North County residents. That was in the transmittal letter.
So then can I recommend that? If, if there's a second to this motion, I'll read the motion and then Jen, can you add that part in? The same as we've been adding for the last several years?
Second.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee and on the capital budget program agrees with staff recommendations to accept the proposed budget for stage one proposed FY twenty five budget Y twenty six and FY thirty program for Department thirty
I should be done.
Thirteen schools. If after, extra funding becomes available, the CIP committee would like to request funds to be provided to the following school project.
The board recommends adding one million to Department two thirteen schools for planning to review expansion of the indoor facilities at Harford High School by adding additional gym space. The current space does not adequately accommodate the needs of the high school's physical education program and the recreational needs of North County residents.
I second that.
I would like to change that from recommend to w- well, we want to add it, period. We've been recommending for seven years and they ignore us.
They can always ignore our requests is my impression. So, we, we don't have that ability to insert, so.
We, 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 the planning board is in a position to only make a recommendation regarding the capital budget.
Okay.
Fortunately, we don't write the checks.
All right.
I have a motion and a second. Um, I'll now do a roll call vote. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Ms. He- he- uh, Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Recused.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson still with us?
No.
Uh, Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye. Mr. Johnson was on there.
Oh, okay. Um, Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
We can't hear you, Mr. Johnson.
Can't hear you. Up or down? Down, okay, thank you. Motion carries. Um, thank you very much. We will now move on to Department two seventeen land preservation. Mr. Warren, you wanted to pull that one out?
Yeah, uh, it's a equal motion that I tried to make last year that I cannot support taxpayer dollars being spent on land preservation without the citizens having access to the land preserved.
So are you requesting that the entire uh, the, the entire funding request for two seventeen be pulled, or are you requesting to drop it?
I, I would support it if, if the citizens had access to the land without the citizens' access, I would pull it.
Okay.
You need to make a motion, Todd, one way or the other.
Okay, I, I will make a motion that in order for this to move forward, that taxpayers would have access to land that's put into preservation.
Do I have a second?
I have, I have a comment.
Mr. Array?
Do we know, do we, I try to know why it is being preserved in one point five acres? Does, I don't know, what are we planning really to do with a one point five?
This is not specific to the one point five acre. This is a general
It's just general P O program.
General funding for land preservation that will be used in various parts of county, particularly outside the Earl.
So, so Todd, so what you want is how, what input do you need from the uh, residents from, from the?
No, I just, I, I believe that if we're going to preserve land indefinitely and pay for that and support that, not only with putting the land in preservation, but also decreasing the tax load on that property indefinitely, that, that people should have access to that, like a park or any other thing that the, that the county would pay for or buy.
Uh, before we continue, do we have a second to Mr. Warren's motion? Mr. Heinel, you're seconding? Okay. Um, do we have further discussion? Ms. Wolfson?
It is not a park. It is agricultural preservation for food and crop production. If you want to go so far as to make it a park, then there ought to be funding for the, for the landowner to um fund adequate facility to make it a park. Is the county ready to support it with maintenance on? Installing parking lots and um bathrooms and um all the other things that go with parks? Are you ready to do that, Todd? Are you ready to commit that, that funding to support a park-like setting on a farm?
I- if we're gonna, if we're going to be buying the land, we should think about that.
Well, that, that, you're, you're, what you're trying to do is create parks on farms. They're farms, they're not parks.
Mr. Array?
Scott, I think that um, I think last year we discussed this. In my view, and this is that it's a state law requirement to preserve certain portions of farms, uh, I, I mean, of land for agricultural purposes. Now, the benefit to me, I don't know about anyone else, is the food that is being produced by the farmers. Is the food that feeds the community. So that is actually a huge benefit to the community uh, from the agricultural products that are being produced. So that is just my position on this.
Mr. McGinnis, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I oppose this uh entirely. Uh, like it's been said before, we're trying to preserve land for production of food and uh, facility and, and uh, plants for future generations for all the uh people. We have a program for ag preservation on aggravate, preserved farms where the farmer can set up to have visitation for people, non-farmers to come and visit the uh farm and see how it's done. So that's a voluntary basis. There obviously is uh, in crop, I mean, in animal production, you do not want people wandering all over the place. So it just uh, it just makes a mockery of the whole program.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
I, I definitely agree with Mr. Warren in, in the theory and the idea of having public access to certain um yeah, pre- preserved land, kind of like Mr. McGinnis said, there are certain lands that they invite people to. I just, I don't know about the, the feasibility part of it and how to physically implement that, kind of like Ms. Wolfson said, like there's no parking lots, there's no bathrooms, there's not even roads to some of the preservation lands. So, I definitely, I, I definitely agree with you, Mr. Warren, in, in, in theory and idea. I just, I don't know how that's feasible to implement without, you know, additional infrastructure money.
Yeah. M- Mr. McGinnis, I I've had a question for a while, and I don't know if you know the answer to it or not. Um, of the agricultural production in Baltimore County, how much of it goes to produce feed crops for other animals? I know someone was saying the other day that, you know, we're growing feed corn that's going up to um, paddle farms up in, in Southern Pennsylvania, et cetera.
At one ti- one time, about half of the food consumed in um, in Baltimore County was produced here. But uh, some of the crops, like you're saying, of corn or soybeans uh, is shipped up to uh, facilities in Lancaster County where it is ground and produced into feed, and then it's shipped to uh, produce milk, uh, beef, cattle, chickens, and so on. And uh, to fit to different uh facilities, and then it's shipped back to our of stores here in Baltimore County where the consumption of the citizens of Baltimore County. So its exact uh percentage or exact numbers, I can't give you, but a large percentage of it comes back.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Warren, I do appreciate where you're coming from, but from running a farmer's market for seventeen years and hearing how farmers are struggling now, the next generation doesn't want to farm anymore because of how difficult it is, I just don't see how it would be feasible to do that.
So let us first have a vote on Mr. Warren's motion. Again, um, I, unless anyone has a question, I mean, I won't ask Mr. Warren to repeat it. I think we understand the, the basic thrust of, of his motion, or does someone need it reread?
Mr. Oliphant, if I may, um a lot, picking up on comments by a few of the, the members, some of this lo- land is landlocked. Uh, it is not accessible to the public now. It is intended to be preserved for environmental benefit even or agricultural benefit. Uh, we're talking primarily about uh, purchasing of easements, not actually purchasing land by the county. So these are easements. We've paid people to continue to farm their property or to hire someone to farm the property, uh, and to pay them not to develop it. So it is really private, largely private property. Uh, to, a comment that was made, I think, by Mr. McGinnis, there is a lot of so that whether it's, you know, Borden Vineyard or um, somebody uh has a farm and they open it as a corn maze in the fall, so there's public access. But that's not uniform, and you don't want to have cattle or other animals that on the farm and yet, you know, then disturbed by visitors. But I guess my primary point is overwhelmingly, this, this is not property the county owns. We have purchased an easement and therefore remains in private ownership hands and there's a concern, I believe, I think there would be a concern about a lot of it probably lead to a lot of owners deciding they would not want to participate in this program. Um, yet it also often as well provides that nest egg for a farmer who uh is looking for that next generation to benefit uh, from, from the, basically the work they've invested over the decade, so. I, I think it's, I, I respect Mr. Warren's position about this. I think it's much more complex, however.
Yes, and I, I, I think it goes to a sort of a broader question of what are the mechanisms that we use to preserve and or fund farm land? But we have a motion in front of us. Uh, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on Mr. Warren's amendment. Mr. Array?
Okay, Scott. I'm so sorry, I have another, I just want clarification. Um, what is the motion?
The motion is that land preservation money will not be, land preservation money, Mr. Warren, say if I've got this right. Land preservation money will only be provided to land that will then be publicly accessible.
But that is, that, let's go back to what Wayne has been saying. The last two years.
Last two years.
He said, he said, or a farmer, you can go and visit, you can go and see how it is done. So the public access, I don't see how it is feasible other than going to call, you know, you can call Wayne and say, hey, I'm coming to look at your farm.
Then I, I, then I think Mr. Warren's position would be that we don't pay money to those places.
But that is also a, a requirement of state law that, that the county is trying to comply with, program open space. Agricultural preservation.
As I said, I, I'm, I'm putting the motion forward and doing a vote. This is that is not my motion.
Okay.
So, Mr. Array, yes or no?
No.
Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Ms. Hafford? Anti?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Heinel?
Yay.
Mr. Hinton?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yay.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yay, yay.
Ms. Wolfson?
No, no. You can't vote twice.
Does not, the motion does not carry. Do I have a motion to approve the um capital budget for two seventeen as recommended?
Motion. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program agrees with the staff recommendation to accept the budget for the stage one proposed FY twenty twenty five budget and FY twenty six FY thirty program for Department two one seven land preservation. If F, if extra funds become available, the subcommittee would, we're, we don't need to do that. So, I'm just calling for that motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, again, a roll call vote. Mr. Array?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes, yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Ms. Hafford?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Opposed.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you. The ayes have it. The uh, motion is approved. The last item to discuss is Department two twenty, the Fire Department. Again, Mr. Warren, I think you have a specific request you want to add.
I, it's more of a question than a request. We had approved, when we approved the um, charging stations that the police department would get adequate training and equipment. to, um, be able to put out these fires that were talked about. I didn't hear that in the proposal. I don't know if that was put in to that, but that was approved by the board unanimously when we approved the charging stations.
So if I missed, if I may, Mr. Hulipka, uh, let me try to, uh, answer that. As far as, um, if it has to do with training, uh, equipment for the fire personnel, that would all be under an operating budget. Uh, if we're talking about structural changes to facilities or, I guess, buying like a truck, uh, that may be capital. Uh, however, the board's recommend, the board has sent forward a report to the county council that the county council is not yet acted upon. So, uh, I frankly, I wouldn't be surprised, though, based on my prior conversations with Chief Rund, that they're not baking that into some of their, their plans already for the operating side to make sure people are better trained, to make sure that if they have special equipment or those kind of things. But I can certainly follow up with the chief and get back to you on how, if at all, how they may have started to address that in this upcoming budget.
And I'm good with the, the thing. I just, I just want to make sure it wasn't blown up.
Sure, no, I understand.
Thank you. Appreciate you raising that again.
Do I have a motion then?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program agrees with staff recommendation to accept the proposed budget for the stage one proposed FY twenty twenty-five budget and FY twenty twenty-six dash FY twenty, I mean, thirty, twenty thirty, program for the apartment twenty-two, uh, two hundred and twenty.
Do I have a second?
Does that include, uh, recommendations for additions?
No, I think the, the discussion is that, that, that may be operational and already being included in current and future budgets. Again, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you.
You made.
Oh, I made the motion, never mind. Sorry, Steve. Got a little excited.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Any further discussion? If not, I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Ms. Hafford?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, I think this concludes our votes and discussions on all of the CIP requests for this year. Um, unless there is anything else, I think I will now accept the motion to, to end the subcommittee hearing.
Before that occurs, Mr. Hulipka, may I just take a moment to thank, uh, the Jen Meacham and her staff or the analysis and work, preparations they did to make sure that the board members had information to help them make the decisions. Also to thank all of you for the attentiveness, because this does set out not only priorities for the county's expenditures over the next uh, number of years, but also it's a reflection on the support that the community has helped to represent. So, thank you very much.
I, I also want to, uh, uh, thank the planning staff for being flexible. I, I thought this format worked well this time. It allowed us to have specific discussions, but still move through a lot of the items relatively quickly, so. I don't know how other board members feel about the, the format.
Great, but board members, we got to remember, if we're not talking, turn your mics off. There's so much background noise.
Very good. Um, again, then this concludes the meeting for tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I think we're adjourned. Hopefully see you all next Tuesday at Newtown.
So.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.